Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this February 2nd, 2012 school board meeting. Happy Groundhog Day. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. Melissa, could you please lead us?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll continue by reading our mission statement. The Newmarket School District is committed to the highest standards of quality education by creating a safe and successful learning community that embraces diversity in response to the social, emotional, intellectual, and physical needs of every child. We are dedicated to fostering links to the broader community to ensure that students develop lifelong skills, enabling them to be contributing and productive members of Good evening, everyone. Welcome again. This is the point in our agenda that we take time to recognize folks for outstanding achievement or contribution or just a chance to recognize. So Jim, can you take us forward?
Well, I'll lead you in this. These have all been unique, and this one is especially so, I think. It's not a secret the week that the junior, senior high school has gone through, starting out with missing school on Monday, and even before that, the two weeks, I should say, closing three classrooms, then closing four more, then closing a bathroom in a hallway. And each time, the students and the staff having to adapt to a whole different way of operating their building. And it was just so impressive with how they really worked to make the best out of a very difficult situation that I decided that the recognition ought to be for all of the students and all of the staff at the school, that they deserve a lot of credit for the way that they've all responded. And I do mean all. So rather than invite 600 people here to this room, we did it at an assembly on Tuesday morning. And so if I can work the buttons right, if you'd sit in the audience, I can show a video, short portion of that.
And as I thought about putting the agenda together for this week, it was easy, and it was all of you. And obviously, I'm not going to bring you all there and call you up one by one, but I have to tell you this, that somewhere in the next couple of weeks, I hope, I'm going to work with the principal, and there will be some token of appreciation, both to staff, some nice thing it will do for you, and the students, some nice thing it will do for you. This isn't easy, but we do a great job, and we really appreciate it. And I'm saying that on behalf just of myself, but also of the school board as a whole. Thank you all. Good luck. We're really trying to keep you safe here, and we'll continue to do that. Thank you.
And again, usually when we call people up, we do give them a token of appreciation. And so we're in the process of figuring something out for staff. It probably will be some kind of a special breakfast, but we're not finalized with that yet. And then for students, I won't let the cat out of the bag, but we're putting something together for, just before vacation is what it's shaping up to be, which is in a couple of weeks. And so I think everybody will enjoy what they get out of it. And again, certainly you're invited, and now, once I get the exact information, I'll update you on it, and hopefully you can join us, because I think there'll be both special events.
Excellent.
Very happy to have that opportunity to do this.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a wonderful community, including in the schools, kids and staff alike, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Nicely done. I just want to mention Chet isn't here this evening. He has a family need to be away this evening, so that's what he's excused for that. This is the point in our agenda for folks to make comments. So if there's any visitors who'd like to make comments, this is the time to do so. We have you later in the program.
I didn't know the agenda.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we've got, after our committee reports, some time to discuss with you, so if you want to.
I'll be glad to do it at that time. That's great.
Should've explained it, I'm sorry.
That's not a problem. Good deal.
Good evening. I'm Joanne Lazarus, and I'm here tonight representing the Newmarket Teachers Association. And I'm asking that you, the school board, help value your greatest asset, your staff. For the first time, our school district is not presenting a teacher's contract to the town for approval. There has been widespread misinformation about why no contract was reached. And I'm stating tonight for the record that no pay raises were asked for nor expected. In light of these hard economic times, including proposed staff cuts, it does seem grossly unfair to award raises to our members of the administration. I think we can all agree that the salaries in our district are the lowest in the area. What we need is for you to value your employees with honest communication and a true spirit to work together to improve education in Newmarket. Before making cuts that directly impact our students, seek input from those that know the true effect that would be. I ask that you show respect for your employees as we continue to demonstrate our dedication to Newmarket's children. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make any comments this evening? All right, hearing none, seeing none. We'll move along. Next, we have Bob Medei, who's our school district moderator, sitting, ready to go there to give us our annual primer on our deliberative session, coming right up. Thanks for coming tonight, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, school board members, Dr. Hayes, others. Thanks for the opportunity to come here tonight to talk to you. We have the deliberative session coming up next week, next Wednesday, following the town deliberative session on Tuesday. The budget committee will be presenting your warrant articles that you put together and your school budget. Okay? So also, I want to thank you for your diligence and all that work. I know I've been in your seat before, and I know the stressful times it goes through to put the budget together. And in these times with the cuts that are being asked of you, I can understand the difficulty that you went through to get there. I also wanted to extend on TV an apology to the budget committee for not being able to do the same type of thing with them, to sit down and talk to them. I really wanted to do that. However, my schedule and their schedules just couldn't coincide. So I was able to watch them on TV as they deliberated over the warrant articles that you guys had put together, and I kind of see how that might be being presented from their side at the meeting. So, all right, so what I wanted to do is really just talk to you about what's going to happen at the deliberative session. I come to you each year right about this time, just to try to get a little feel from you folks on what you think might transition at the meeting, and for me to ask of you to make sure that we have certain things in line for a successful meeting. Okay? So on my list of things, I just want to talk a little bit about the format of the meeting. And once again, and I'll take the opportunity on TV to address the public and say that the deliberative session is a very important session. Years ago, we moved from the town meeting, the one and only town meeting to conduct business, to what they call the SB2 form of business. And we hold two town meetings, actually. So the first town meeting will be the deliberative session, and the second town meeting is when everybody comes out to vote the following month. And the date of that will be, you guys hear?
March the 13th.
March the 13th is going to be the date when we will actually cast votes on the warrant articles and the budget, which is deliberated at the deliberative session, the first session. So the first session we're going to have for the school budget is going to be next Wednesday night. Again, the town is going to hold their budget deliberative session on Tuesday night, and it's going to follow in the same type of format that we will have on Wednesday night. So your warrant articles, including your budget as warrant article number one, will be presented to the public. I'll read the warrant articles as written. And the point of the deliberative session is to allow the public to, actually, kind of take a first cut at the warrant articles, to tell you the truth. It is a voting session. The deliberative session is a voting session for the town members, and what they might vote on that night is any changes that might be made, any proposals to change the warrant articles. Now, they are allowed to change them only within the structure of the law. They can't change what they call the intent of the warrant article. But they, as a voting public, as a town, as a town meeting, do have the right to change the dollar amount of the warrant article, or somewhat of the language, they can move it around a little bit, but certainly, they must keep the intent. So there is guidance there for them to do that. So it is a very important meeting. So the way the meeting starts out is I'll open the meeting, and then, of course, we'll have a pledge of allegiance. Now typically, I can lead the pledge of allegiance, or we can have other members, school representative can lead the pledge of allegiance at the meeting if they want. I don't know if you folks have discussed anything along those lines on how you want to do that?
We have not. Another thing that, as I recall, we've had in the past is at least representatives of the school band to play the National Anthem. That's probably your next question.
That's my next question, exactly. Yeah, good lead-in.
So I think we've got two questions to answer for you on that.
Okay, and that's fine. You know, we can discuss it too, just before the meeting.
I'd like to get back to you, so you're not walking into not knowing.
Okay. All right, so Penny can shoot me an email tomorrow if you want.
Yep, we'll check in.
Okay. Or even early next week.
See, we're fortunate enough that Melissa has an amazing voice that she could probably sing for us, too.
I remember the time available.
I like that idea. I'll check in with tomorrow, okay?
So we'll work that out.
Okay, that's good.
Sounds like we've got already some options, so that's.
Some volunteers?
Yeah.
Okay, good, good. Okay, so we opened the meeting, we have a pledge of allegiance. I opened the meeting officially, and then after a short discussion about safety issues, I'll usually go over with the audience exits, and I'll ask everybody to silence their electronic devices. So from there, I'll probably start off with a short introduction of the rules of the meeting. And I'll have a published handout for moderator rules that I'll scatter around the audience. Now, usually, since when we're downstairs, I put a few on the chairs here and there, so I'm not quite sure if I'll just scatter them about in the bleachers or what, but that'll be available for everybody, and I'll go over them. Depending upon the, probably actually depending upon what transpires the night before at the other meeting, we'll set the tone for our meeting, and whether I read all the rules or just go over the highlights, we'll see how that goes and where that happens. But there will be a review of the moderator rules for how I expect the conduct of the meeting to go. I'll read each of the warrant articles as they're printed on the warrant. You folks have already forwarded to me an electronic copy, which will be helpful to me to enlarge the print and get familiar with it, so I can actually read it in front of everybody. On the warrants, do you folks have individuals to present each warrant, information for each warrant?
We've done that in the past. We haven't, when we finalized the warrant, it was at like 10:30. So we haven't really had a chance to discuss that. We could certainly do it, though.
I did last year, and I've prepared handouts that everybody can get at the door, that they'll come. And so it'd be a good summary, but I'd probably want to take a few minutes on each one just to review some things.
So.
Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, what we did last year was the superintendent made the presentations, so.
So I understand you're going to make Dr. Hayes speak to each and every warrant. Boy, oh, boy, you guys are just.
We don't make him.
They really. Okay, that's good. So I'll look to Dr. Hayes then, after I read the warrant article, to give another summary of the article.
Yeah, and it won't be, last year, it was a PowerPoint slide presentation. It won't be that. It'll just be simply summarizing points that are in the handout, and so.
Okay, and that's fine. Now, I don't know how the town moderators can conduct business on Tuesday night, but I'm going to conduct business the same as I've always done for warrant articles. I don't ask for a motion to put the warrant article on the floor, and I don't ask for a vote at the end of the warrant article. The state statute is that the warrant articles, as presented at the deliberative session, will go before the public at the second session, the voting session, as written unless amended at the deliberative session. So all I'm going to do is read the warrant article, Dr. Hayes is going to present some detailed information on it, and then I'm just going to ask if there's any discussion. And there may be some individuals coming from the audience to add a couple of insight on their own to the warrant article. If there's no amendments made to the warrant article, then there's no votes to be cast. I'll close the warrant article, and we'll move on to the next one. And it's as simple as that. In my opinion, I don't want to waste the time of the public or the time of the meeting asking for it to be presented onto the floor and asking for a final vote if there's no changes. It's the order of business. The business will be in accordance with amendments proposed, and that's that. So that's how we're going to conduct the warrant articles. When we get through the warrant articles at the end of the night, now, just before we go home, there's usually a final warrant article on there, and I haven't looked at my paperwork quite yet, but the last warrant article usually says to conduct other business as necessary, right? Well, this isn't a time to get up and propose something new and spend all kinds of money. That last warrant article by statute is not an expenditure of funds or anything like that. But it gives us an opportunity to, again, make recognitions and do stuff like that. So if you have any special recognitions you'd like me to bring up, sometimes an individual that might be retiring after many years of service, special recognitions to somebody in the school who has made some major advancements, anything like that, is certainly appropriate to bring up in front of the public at that time for other business. And you don't have to get back to me right now. Again, you can do it later, or you can give it to me at the deliberative sessions. Certainly, I can take care of it at that time. So another thought that you can ponder over for a few days. Okay? So, all right, down to the nitty-gritty of the meeting, there's a few things I want to make sure that we have in line, okay, to make sure we run smooth that night, okay? Right now, just, and you may not, do you know of, you know, you guys have been working with the warrants for a while, are you aware of any amendments that might come up that night that we can prepare for or anything? And that's fine if you don't, and you may not, but just to feel.
Yeah, we made some changes coming out of the public hearing, so we heard comments from the public, and then made adjustments to the language, and so I think that probably addressed any potential ones, but that's all I know.
Okay, great, so we should be all set there. All right. What we should plan for is to have some staff that's available to count votes, to count hands, okay? Usually, it's about two members, two people from checkers of the list or something as people come in, so could you please make sure that we have at least two people to count hands, okay? I don't want to be distracted doing it, and certainly, I believe it's improper for you folks to have to count, or for the budget committee for that matter. So I was at the public session, so we do have a pretty good PA system. It seemed to work well that night. I assume it's going to be similar. All right? Sometimes people get a good idea to have a portable microphone to hand out into the audience, and I don't recommend that. I don't, I think I, as a moderator, could lose control of that microphone, and I don't want that to happen. So if you're thinking about asking for a portable microphone, I'm really going to try to stand against it.
Same setup as the hearing.
Yeah, yeah. So what we did there, if nobody's familiar with what we did on that public session when the warrants were first presented for discussion, we had a microphone down front, and we always do have a microphone, and people can come down. Now, it gets a little distracting in the gymnasium, because people, and we found out that night, walking up and down the bleachers gets kind of noisy and all, but I guess it's just something we're going to have to deal with. So if you are talking, and you do notice a crowd of people coming out of the stands to come up to the microphone, you might want to just make note and just hold off your discussion for a little bit till people get settled down, and I'm going to try to do the same. We need an area to segregate non-voters, okay? And I think what they also did at the public session was way off on the presenter's left, right by the door on the way in, there was a segregated area. So that needs to be clearly defined with some tape or something to segregate them from the voting public. All right, we need to make sure that's sure, that happens. We need yes/no votes papers for silent voting, and usually in the past, we bring about two sets. I recommend quite a few more. We never know. You know, I'm thinking in the order of five or six sets or more. We can bring them back and keep them on the shelf for next year if we don't use them, but we never know when it might get asked for a silent vote. Also, typically in the past, we've had a safety officer present at the town meeting, okay? So I see some nods, so, yeah, we'll get that arranged. If we have to postpone the meeting due to weather, certainly that's a possibility. Now, I did check to weather report tonight. It looks clear. It looks like a good set. But if things should change, Dr. Hayes, I'm going to look to you for some guidance there, and we'll certainly be in touch that day. We'll certainly know earlier in the day what that might do. Along with perhaps in climate weather is the slight possibility that I might not be able to attend. Now, I certainly have all plans to be there, but not being able to have a crystal ball and see the future, I'll just ask you to keep in mind consideration of a substitute moderator, just so that you're not surprised in the event that I'm surprised and I can't make it that night, but I am planning on being there. And then we're going to have a note taker, right? You'll have somebody to take notes?
Yep.
Okay, good. I'm getting near the end, almost done. I am done. So if you don't have any questions for me, those are my concerns, and that's what I'd like you to know about the deliberative session.
Pretty thorough discussion of it all.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I had some, but you answered them, so.
Good.
Good.
Excellent.
All right, well, thanks for allowing me to share some time with you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
We'll see you in a few days. Okay.
Lance, before you go on, is there any way to shut off this blue flickering strobe-light effect behind Dr. Hayes?
I'm sure there is.
Turn it off.
Thank you.
Does it take a while to turn back on? Does he have something else? Yeah.
It shouldn't take too long. All right, we've got some minutes from prior meetings. Someone would like to make a motion regarding, starting with the first one on September the 1st?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the non-public session minutes from December 1st.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, we have December the 8th.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from December 8th, 2012, non-public meeting.
Second.
Discussion on those? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, January the 10th.
Do we do the, sorry, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to accept the non-public minutes of January the 10th.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, January the 19th.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from January 19?
I'll second that, sorry.
Okay, so, Lundy, you weren't present, so we'll assume that you'll abstain. Are there any, you're welcome to make comments, but is there any changes or anything to be discussed regarding that?
I have some questions.
Okay.
On page five, last paragraph, kind of second to last sentence, it says, Chris Andruski said that the special ed students would still have a study lab, but regular education students in ninth and 10th grade would not, we were specifically talking about block scheduling. What about the 11th and 12th graders? Should it be nine through 12, or did they just, I just.
I believe he said the 11th and 12th graders would have a study hall every other day depending on how many AP classes they're taking in order to invoke their senior privileges.
All right, because I knew it had something to do with senior privileges, but it wasn't in here, so I just wanted to know.
I'm almost positive that.
Okay.
She's correct, yeah.
All right. I do have one other thing. On page nine, basically, the top paragraph towards the end, we were talking about the coaches' stipends, and it says that losing the raise will impact the quality of coaches we get, and they're not doing it for the money. And then it says that Kelly Foster said that the message was, and not the money is important. I just wanted to clarify what I was saying there. I know it was a late meeting, so it's a very truncated version of what I had said. I basically, the way I would read it would be Kelly Foster said that the message we send to the community about not funding the administrative equity adjustments is important, but the small amount of that money in those adjustments equal in the $15 million budget is not, you know? Does that make sense? Do you get what I'm trying to say? It's not that the money isn't important, it's just the amount of those adjustments to a $15 million budget. To me, I was trying to say the message that we were sending, that we're hearing them, that we're not, that's what I, does that make sense, Jen?
Yeah.
Okay.
I knew that was the message you meant.
Okay, that's all I was saying.
So are we changing the language to reflect that better? Do you?
Do you have a better, I mean, I can show you what I wrote if you feel like I can just pass it down later, and you can, all right. Or do you want to know what it actually says? Probably, probably the best idea.
Well, if we're.
Amending it.
If we're making a formal record of our minutes, I think we need to understand what the language changes, if there is one.
Should I read it again?
Yeah, so.
What you're amending.
What you're striking and what you're replacing.
I would like to amend the last sentence to say Kelly Foster said that the message we send to the community about not funding admin equity adjustments is important. Do you get that part? I'll wait.
Are you sure that's what you were talking about at the time, what it's talking about?
Yes, because I remember the conversation went back. I mean, it went back to that, and we were talking about all of the cuts that we were making, and I just, I think I was just reiterating what I had said earlier. I mean, if you look earlier in the minutes, it's pretty much what I said, too. But I just wanted to make sure that that doesn't get misconstrued. Are you all set, Jen?
Yeah.
Is that good?
I think that's good.
Okay, thank you.
I feel a little dazed at the moment, but I'm coming back.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't think it would be that.
So, do you have anything else?
I just had questions. In the next paragraph, we talked about, I think I actually already answered this question today, but I asked Jim to have, to come up with the numbers in other area technology departments in terms of how many staff they have in other school districts, and I asked you about that earlier today.
I checked into that. He had some data, but it wasn't enough for me, and I asked him. He had some data, but it wasn't enough for me, and I asked him to get more on other districts.
So I just wanna make sure we'll have that by the time we have the deliberative session.
He's working on that, yeah, I think so.
Okay. All right. And there was one other piece that I wanted to make sure, and I think Joan already has it, but we talked about making sure that we had a running total of the staff reductions that we've made over the course of our prior budgets, so that we can refer to that as well. And that is all I have, and I know that's quite enough.
I have one, which is almost humorous.
Aaron.
On page 10, about a third of the way down, we're missing a W in warrant articles.
Oh, yeah, I didn't even catch that one.
If anyone's doing, it's a, it's a good word to have right if someone's doing a word search scan.
Okay.
Okay, and there is one more set of minutes I see in our packet, but not listed in the...
Don't we have to vote?
No, sorry. Thank you. I said I was a little bit out there, didn't I? So, no more on those minutes, so all those in favor of the motion to approve those minutes with the minor language clarifications signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And one abstention. Okay, and that night, we also had a non-public session. I'd like to offer a motion regarding those minutes.
Do you have them?
Do you have the January 19th?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the non-public minutes from January 19.
And I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And again, one abstention. Okay. Thank you all for bearing with me on that. Melissa, you are up.
What's new? Oh, lots of things.
Into your last semester of school in Newmarket.
Oh, there's a lot of things happening. Well, on good notes, we have Penguin Plunge this Saturday, is it the 4th, February 4th? Yep. And that is going to benefit Special Olympics, and at lunch, oh wait, we have 29 students diving into the ocean on Saturday and two staff members. So that's, and we always usually get recognition for having a lot of people do this. And at lunch, Student Council is selling these paper penguins you can write your name on, which is going to also be donated to the Special Olympics, and we were supposed to sell 1,000 of them, so Mr. Williams would jump in, but we've only sold 26, so...
Not too late, is it?
I think it might be, but nonetheless, still, we encourage you to, or your student or your kids to buy them at lunch because it still benefits Special Olympics. So we'll be there all three lunches. And boys' basketball is 11 to 1, and girls' basketball is 5 to 7. We had our senior halfway there dinner last Wednesday, which was a great success. There was lots of food and games, and we all had a pretty good time. Indoor track, final meet is this weekend. And also just to, so just to give a quick student perspective on the building happenings from this week, it's been pretty tough moving around. There's been lots of detours in the building, you go upstairs and downstairs, and you go back up, and then you go back down, and it's been tough, but everyone's had great morale and really working with it, so I just wanted to give student perspective on that. It's hard, but it's doable at this point, until it all gets fixed, for most. So that is everything.
I just have to chime in spontaneously. I happened to be with Dr. Hayes in the building by, just by luck, on Tuesday when there happened to be a fire drill.
Oh, yeah.
I've never, I haven't been in a school during a fire drill since 19, like, 82.
Well, that one was fun, the fire drill was fun.
So, but I was impressed with how it took me back, but also how smoothly it all ran, you know, it was, I think, I don't know whose idea it was, whether it came from the building administration or the fire department, but it was a grand idea to make sure the kids knew how to get out of that space.
Yes.
With all, with not the normal egresses in play, and it went very smoothly. I know from talking to the fire chief afterwards that he was very pleased with the amount of time it took, I'm probably stealing your superintendent's notes later. But I just, I thought it, you know, it was, everyone leaving the building was just, it happened automatically, everyone was very cooperative, and it's just kinda fun to feel like a kid while, you know, leaving, you know, in a fire drill, just like in the old days.
Yeah, it was very well organized. I know Mr. Andruski and Mr. Williams came around to all the classrooms after we had the three closed down, and came around to every class and said which way to leave now with this stairwell closed and that stairwell closed, so everyone was very well prepared for, which we, we figured there would be a fire drill coming up with the, with the building, so, but, yeah, it ran pretty smoothly. Thank you.
Any other questions or thoughts from Melissa? All right, to you then, Dr. Hayes.
Well, it'd be a good jumping off point. Besides practicing fire drills and having those be routine, we have two other things. We have, I think it's called shelter in place.
And lockdown.
And lockdown.
Yeah.
And they both have different meanings, and we do practice them, and unfortunately, today, we had to do shelter in place. A bullet, I believe a .22 caliber, single ammunition, was found in a locker room underneath a bench, and I was notified of it around 12:30, a little bit after, and so shortly thereafter, they went into shelter in place, brought in the local police, who assisted administrators in searching bookbags, I believe, every classroom.
Bags, purses, jackets.
Okay, and then, and then once classrooms were completed, then went out into the hallway and checked all of the lockers, and obviously did a visual scan as they, as they went. There was nothing further that was found. It turns out that, I'm not sure how the sequence came, but, but a student came forward to be, to indicate that he was responsible for it, and, and that clearly, my understanding is there was no malicious intent, it was purely accidental, but the matter has to be dealt with, I'm sure, and will be by the school, but at least it was, it was, you know, circumstantial, again, students handled it well. Shelter in place means everybody stays in their room, but you can continue instruction. It's not a threat within the school, but there's a process going on that we don't want students in the hallway. And so, you know, that was handled very well. I was at the school by around 2 o'clock, 2:15, they were wrapping up all of that, and you had a normal dismissal today, and before they dismissed, the principal had an announcement that made it clear to students what that was all about, and staff what it was all about, and, and then at some point, I know he's, if he hasn't done it already, is alert now to parents to keep them informed as well, so. All in all, another difficult part to a difficult, two weeks, but handled very well by everybody involved. Couple other, I'm sorry, you have questions?
I was just impressed, you know, my daughter, I went home and she told me about it, it was like the first thing, you wanna hear about my day? And I just was impressed by the way she, the, the way it was handled, they continued to keep the students aware through the intercom as it was going on, like what they were gonna do, and, you know, so it wasn't like they were all just sitting there wondering, why are we sitting here doing nothing? And I was very impressed with that, you know, I'm glad that that, that happens that way. I'm sure there's a protocol of some kind.
There is, very well practiced, and, yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Next is, just to let you know, we have an item on the agenda, the junior, senior high schools program of studies that's being tabled, still needs some work, so hopefully at your next meeting, that will come. The last thing that's in my superintendent's report is to make a request of you, and hopefully you'll approve it. Again, looking at the junior, senior high school and the difficult time that they've been with, having to call off school on Monday because of structural engineers and work being done and not enough bathrooms, it would be my, it would be my request, if you would approve it, that March 16th, which is scheduled as a full-day professional day, what I, what I would like to do is have your approval to use that as a regular school day for the junior, senior high school students, rather than making that day up in June. And as for the staff who would work that day either way, professional day or not, that they would not have to make that day up as well in June, so effectively shorting their school year by one, but I think it, to me, I think it's a real generous decision that makes it easy for people who've been through a difficult time, so I would hope you support that proposal.
Does the teachers' union...
Oh, yeah, they...
...on board and...
Oh, absolutely, yes, yeah. Yeah, so if you want some words for a motion, let me, let me put some words in your mouth.
You do that.
That we use the March, that we use March 16th as a regular school day...
Wait, 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 wait.
You just asked if the teachers' union was on board with it, and that's not accurate.
I'm sorry, but it is. And I spoke with your president, and she knows all about it, your co-president.
Right, okay. We were not in agreement with it. She called me right before the meeting started.
It's not the way it was shared with me.
I don't know.
Well, because it's professional development, in which the district is required to provide...
And that's, and that's true. Again, you...
Yeah, I mean...
Fine, you want me to withdraw it, I'll withdraw it, but I'm telling you the conversation that took place.
Maybe we should wait a little while.
Maybe we should wait, okay.
Investigate it a little further.
Yep.
I love the gesture, and I think the students will appreciate it, and I think it's something we should definitely pursue.
Yeah, we would be willing to discuss it, but, I mean, I'm sorry, that was not part of the conversation.
The, and that would be similar for the elementary school as well as the junior, senior high school?
No, the elementary school, it would have been a normal professional development day, because they, they didn't miss a day of school on Monday, and was trying to put the two schools back in sync.
Okay, so hopefully, we can take care of that in the, in our next meeting later in February, however it lands. Okay.
Okay, that's all I had. Matt?
Any questions regarding those things? Okay, on to facilities, then.
We had a facilities committee meeting last evening, and, and I've provided you with a copy of the minutes of that meeting. We took up a couple, well, one thing primarily, and that was looking at a, what the architect called a massing plan, which is not a schematic design to the site, but what it is, is a, just a, I'll call it a bubble chart almost, of how could you take the current facility and add new construction around that facility in a way that complies with all the setbacks and things you have to do, and other new construction requirements? And so what we, he was trying to do is maximize that site to get to the kind of, the kind of square footage, gross square footage that we need to, to conduct a program that complies with codes and state standards and so forth. So he went through that, gave people an explanation, we had a good discussion, and it's still a topic to be worked on. I think that the bottom line to the discussion of the facilities committee was, it's really important that we continue to flesh this idea out, find out what the costs are and what the implications are as well, and so we will continue to, to work on that. The other thing, the only other thing that we did is give them an update on the ceilings and where that is, but that was a very small part of the meeting. The other thing that I have relative to facilities is on the initial report that I gave you. Dan Bisson was really quite motivated to find out more about the 1924 construction, and then how all the other construction took place to form the school that we have, and so he did a lot of research from previous town and school district reports, worked with the numerical, the Newmarket Historical Society, and, and came up with this chronology, and I put in your, your book, your packet, a quick summary of the, of the chronology of events. It's very fascinating reading, and I will circulate, you may wanna glance at a binder that he put together, because not only did he put this chronology together, but he, he made copies of segments out of the actual town warrant, town annual reports from as far back as 1924, so it's kind of an interesting booklet.
Is that gonna be available on their website at all, as far as...
I could do that, as a PDF, yeah, I could do that.
It was very interesting that they were having the same conversations back in 1923 that we're having now.
Yeah, and that they built the building in '24, and then in '26 realized they didn't build enough classrooms, and so, same story, different times, so.
Any other, any questions regarding facilities report? Okay. Okay, terrific, then we'll move to our program this evening, and as we spoke about earlier a little bit, we have some distinguished guests this evening. Thanks for, for coming. Senator Russell Prescott and Representative Adam Schroeder are here, but also I see Marsha Moody's in the room as well, so thanks, thank you all for coming. We'd love to, I guess, have the opportunity to, to update us on, on things that are near and dear to our hearts, like opportunities for, I was thinking of that one, yeah, how that's moving, hopefully through, through the process, and other things that are, that are on the docket that you'd like to discuss, maybe field some questions, so. Mr. Prescott, you were the most enthusiastic earlier, I think it's only fair that you get a first shot.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having me this evening. It's my pleasure. I wanna be the best servant I can to you, so you've been conversing some of you with me by email, and I hope you all have my email address. If not, I can grab my card in my truck and bring them to you. I wanted to give you a little background of where I am in the Senate and what I've done in the Senate, what I'm doing in the Senate. I am on the Education Committee, so it lends it that anything that does come over from the House, and I know there are a few House bills you guys are following that would like to see passed, if it comes over, I'm sure it's gonna come to my committee. Senator Stiles from Hampton is the chairman, and I am a member of that committee. I ask for as little responsibility as possible. I also run a, a small business in Exeter, and, you know, you, you have to balance both your business life and your, and the life that you need to lead as a senator, so by asking for a little, I got a lot. I'm the chairman of commerce, and I guess that kinda helps me stay very intact and in tune with what goes on with the economy of the state of New Hampshire. And I'm working with Employment Security to have a job fair at the Exeter Town Hall one week from today. I think it's very good that I get this out to the people of Newmarket. Please come, it's between 9 and, and 3. I've asked the governor to come by, and he's stated that he wants to come by, so we may get a visit, a visit from Governor Lynch, and it's been in the papers, and I've been writing about it. It's jobs in the economy that are so important to us these days. If the economy improves, we can also improve our cash flow at the state of New Hampshire and, and help with the problems that are trying to get money to those towns that need it the most, and that's where my mindset is, and what I've been trying to do for the past year. And we've, you know, kept some promises and hope to keep them all, and that is to make sure that education funding stays static, although it hasn't increased, it, it did not decrease to the towns, and we're able to do that balance of a big budget deficit without raising any taxes. And so far, I put this out to say, if you see that there's anything that we've overlooked or something where I can help to make sure that budget cuts haven't affected too deeply, that's what I'm here for, and to be of assistance, just email or call me, whether it's my cell, 231-7822, or, you know, just call up the State House. And beyond that, I know that I've been working in the Internal Affairs Committee. I'm a chairman of that committee, and we just executed, exacted out of committee yesterday a constitutional amendment that would help free up money to be targeted to towns that are the neediest. Right now, if it put in simple terms of how we are constrained by the Claremont Court cases, and this is probably not fully 100% accurate, but if we have 100 towns and $100, it needs to be distributed evenly, a dollar a town, and we don't have the ability to distribute that. If, if one town needs $3 and two other towns don't need their dollar, we're, we kinda are constrained by not having our constitution clear about having the responsibility with the legislature to take care of disparities for public education. And I talked with the Governor Lynch on two separate occasions about a constitutional amendment. He's in favor of it. He's in favor of a well-crafted constitutional amendment to put the real onus on the legislator to be responsible for education and to be fully able to target aid where it's needed the most. That's, I think, will bring this state forward to a point where your legislature is going to be more accountable to the voter, where we can actually say that I think I can do something. If I get up there, I'm able to find out where are the best places to put very scarce money from the state of New Hampshire, and we can do that constitutionally after this amendment is passed. So it's passed the House, it's passed the Senate, and just, all it does now is to make sure that the House has agreed with the new Senate language that the governor seems to want to put his, his backing to. So that's where we're, we're at for that. And with that, you know, I, I'm here to listen and learn, and if you want to ask questions of me, I'd be glad to answer them, and I'd also be happy to, to sit down and be out of the spotlight as well. So, thank you again for inviting me.
Thank you for coming. We really appreciate you being here. Does anyone have any specific questions for Senator Prescott?
Did you? No. We're starting there.
Breathe up here.
Moving.
I have some questions, buddy. Go ahead. You go. Okay. So, obviously, you're well aware of our school situation here in Newmarket, and a lot of people are very interested in the school building aid, the SB 383. Can you talk a little bit about that, and when you may anticipate that we can access state aid again for building projects and?
It has to do with freeing up money that is scarce in Concord these days.
Yeah.
I believe that Senator Stiles is the primary sponsor of this bill.
Yeah.
I am on education, and I believe we'll be hearing that shortly. I have not had all the input from that, from that bill. However, I have to, to relate to the town of Newmarket. I live in Kingston, and we had a proposal to replace our school. It was in, you know, tens of millions of dollars, and it took a few years for us to get the price to where the towns could agree, the townspeople could agree, and where the need got to a peak. So it, it's kind of a balance of how it happens. And, you know, some of my children went 100% to Sanborn Regional High School at the Sanborn Seminary, and then some of my children went 100% to the new school, but the in-between ones had the transition. It, I think you are, all of you have, you know, many, many, maybe in the audience have emailed me, and I've related this to them, and they're saying the same thing. I would like to see my child, you know, as they get older, to have a state-of-the-art school. And if you drive through Kingston on Route 111, it's, it's quite a fantastic school. I've been there a number of times. It's, on sad occasions and on joyful occasions, it's really a place where the whole community gathers together, even for, for wakes and, and, and also for community events other than that, so. So, and, and back to Senate Bill 383, we'll be hearing that bill, and of course, you know from my opening comments, I am absolutely interested in targeting aid and, and then making sure building aid is, is available as we loosen up with increasing the, the job growth in New Hampshire and our economy improves.
Can I ask just a follow-up question on HB 1199? It says, "School district voting on school building projects," and in the language that we were provided, excuse me, it says, "Currently, they're developing a list of all school building projects approved by school districts in 2010, 2011." Obviously, we're not at that point now, so does that impact our process, like, do they get all the money, or is it going to be based on the need factor, like, we'll have equal opportunity to access the money, so they won't have, they won't be taking all the money from Newmarket? Am I making any sense? I'm sorry, I'm really not feeling well.
Sorry, yeah. The question wasn't real clear.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does anybody know?
It's a House bill. Is it still in the House? Is it still in the House? Because I don't follow House bills.
Oh. Okay, sorry. So maybe I need to be asking somebody else. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Apologize.
All right.
Did anybody get what I was trying to say?
I think, maybe.
I'm sorry. I'm not going to talk anymore today.
They heard some testimony on this earlier today in the House, and the, there were kind of two parts to it. I think to your question about that, as I understand it, yeah, kind of, it, it begins to suggest a change in the way that the state administers aid.
Right.
Less of the long-term bonded help and more upfront help, but that also, by the indication of the bill, means that some of the past projects are going to receive a lot of the, the state aid on a year-to-year basis prior to new projects. There would be some available for new projects. And so, but, but what's a positive about the bill is that it would allow communities like Newmarket, particularly Newmarket, I guess, to begin to vote on what we want to do for our school project prior to the lifting of the moratorium. So right now, I feel like we're kind of like handcuffed a little bit, you know, exploring options, and so I put in my support for that bill today with that in mind, so.
So the, the language that I gave them makes it look like it's projects that have already begun, so should this pass, if, if we still get started before the moratorium begins, we would perhaps come underneath this, this bill? Is that what I hear you saying? Did I ask that right?
I can ask if that's their intent.
Yeah.
I spoke with the Director of State Building Aid at the Department of Education for quite a while today, and as he explained the ramifications to me, what you just asked would not have fallen under the purview.
Yeah, that's what the language sounded like. I wasn't sure.
That was Adam Schrader.
Yeah.
I was, I was curious, if I can ask it, I was curious about SB 373, which would allow school districts to retain funds for emergency expenditures, similar to what happens for towns and the town side. Is, I don't know if you're familiar with that, and I'm curious where that stands and what optimism there is for something like that happening.
That, again, if it's coming to the Senate Education Committee, I'll, it'll be heard this within the next few weeks.
Okay.
If it's a new Senate bill, then that's, that's where I'll get my input, and if you have, you know, before the hearing, your inputs for it, that helps me make my decision, because usually you exec the bill, meaning you have a recommendation of the committee to the full Senate floor, you know, within a couple of weeks after we have the public hearing. So it's worthwhile for me to have your input of that bill before the public hearing.
Okay.
You have a question?
There was a public hearing on it yesterday.
January 31st.
Or January, Tuesday.
Says a public hearing is scheduled in Senate Education next Tuesday, January 31st, because we got these before that. So I don't know if that happened or not. Maybe it didn't.
It probably did. I was out of town, out of state on the, on the 31st.
Okay.
So the, more crucial, that you have that for me.
All right, because if they've already had a public hearing, then it's going to move, okay.
Any other questions?
No, but does, Jim, do you have any feedback about that?
About 373? No, I haven't. I mean, I, you know, I, I need to know more about it personally. I mean, it sounds good on one level, but also, we, you know, we do pretty well in terms of moving monies into capital reserve funds, and it helps us deal with unanticipated. So I think I, personally, I'd like to learn more about it.
So maybe we can reach out to you via email or something to get a little bit more information once?
Will do.
Terrific. Well, thanks again for coming. It's, I look forward to being able to be a better conduit for, for you and your office to, so that we can make sure that the people of Newmarket are getting, getting your ear as much as possible.
That's right. I've been enjoying the opportunity to stand at this podium now. It's, it's been about three times at least, maybe four, that I've been up here, so thank you for letting me come before your committee. Appreciate it.
And I guess, you know, you're looking forward to our feedback via email or what have you. If you have questions for us, if you, you know, if you're wondering about things, I'd encourage you to, to give us something as well.
Yes. Have your card. Speaking of that, Cliff and I met at the, the SAU for Exeter, a SAU-wide meeting just like this, and the community technical schools came up, and because I was a chair of Internal Affairs, we were concerned about level funding for the community technical schools at that meeting, and I was able to work with the Department of Education, Lisa Denly, in bringing in a late bill to change the method of, of how education is funded to those community technical schools, to make sure it is level-funded for those schools, and that is going to be heard at the Education Committee to come up. So that's why I kind of made the introduction. I think because of, you know, asking for a little, I got a lot of responsibility. Being Chair of Commerce and Chair of Internal Affairs, I, I think I can help you guys a lot, and if you have those needs, I'm ready to serve. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks very much.
No.
Adam, would you like to come and we-
Actually, I think I was scheduled to resume for the 16th.
Yeah, and that, and that's fine if you want to hold to that. That's, that'd be good. Sure.
I'll talk individually to you after we meet.
All right.
And I guess I've been kind of interacting with a lot of folks on this issue a little bit more recently. I presented in front of the town council last night, so I'm not sure how, how much more I should bring up. You guys very helpfully pointed out a couple of bills to, to follow up on in the legislature or on the House side. Certainly, bills that would prioritize funding, and then the other bill that I just mentioned about trying to improve our, our options to seek solutions here by at least being able to vote on stuff before that moratorium would be lifted. And, but through, through the, the process also, I feel like in presenting and talking to you guys tonight, just what, the sense that I'm feeling, you know, in the House at least side of Concord, is just that it's been difficult to see that the building aid that we hope for is coming, like, right around the corner all that soon. Last time, we talked about 2014, and then as it was explained to me today during the conversation with the, the Director of State Building Aid for the Department of Education, that it appears the momentum right now is to try and free up 50 million a year in state building aid, but cap it there, but then with funding those past projects that may limit the amount available initially to new projects to like eight or nine million a year. And the, the reason I say that, and I, you know, I think that something that Marsha and me and everybody here can do is try and push to improve, you know, help, help make that so that the needy communities like ours can maybe see that sooner. But it's really difficult to say how that would happen. To give you an example, we're, Marsha and I are in the Resources Recreation and Development Committee, and last week, we heard a bill, maybe two weeks ago, about prioritizing funding for wastewater treatment projects. And these projects have been completed already, and they are owed money by the state. They've already finished their projects, and the state has not had the money to pay them the money that they owe them, even by law, on those projects. And so, it's not just the building aid that we're talking about. There's a lot of those things. And in terms of the wastewater treatment projects, I think the list was something like 85 long that are unfunded at this point, that are already completed, including a couple here in town. And not only that, but the same way that there are bills being put in that have to do with the prioritization of school building aid, the bill we heard was about the prioritization of wastewater treatment aid. So there are communities that are battling to be the first up when aid might become available, and I just, it's difficult to say. From what I've seen and heard in talking to people around the House about the school building aid priority, everything I've heard has been good, but I've noticed just a pattern, and Marsha probably has more, has seen the pattern for a longer period of time, a pattern where things may come out of a committee with a recommendation of ought to pass very strongly to the full House in general session, and then maybe, maybe Manchester, for instance, has decided that, that it hasn't gotten its fair share in this, and they've got a lot of, a lot of delegates, a lot, you know, a lot of representatives in the legislature, and maybe something turns right away. So it's really just very difficult to say, and something that's hard for me to relay how quickly and how, the extent to which we can certainly rely upon it, I guess, is what I'm saying. And I don't say that to be, I, I want to push it, I just, I just get nervous, I guess, in, in hearing what we're talking about. So I wanted to pass that along. In, in the conversation that I had with the, with the Department of Education today, though, one thing I wanted to say, hopefully, you know, to television and in public, in discussing the closure on, on Monday, I sort of inadvertently, it was an informal conversation, but I used the words deferred maintenance, and I wanted to point out to you guys and to the public that very quickly, the Department of Administration, or Education corrected me, and they said that it was not in any way deferred maintenance, and that it had to do with the original way that that area of the building was built 60 years ago, or whatever it was, and it was only by the diligent maintenance that we were, you know, completing here today. You guys were, that even found the problem. So that was, I thought, something that everybody should hear and should, should know, is, is sort of a, a commending of the work that you guys are doing. The, the other thing that, that came about in my conversation with him, and it's something I've kind of mentioned a couple of times, I have the sense in, at least in the House, is that there are, in, in terms of the state building aid formulas and things like that, there are a lot of people I've noticed in the House that are interested in doing, creating a community-by-community approach to these things that fit communities best for what they have available as opposed to the, the blanket. Like, the first time I was before this board, we were talking about the difference between the 30%, the 40%, and the 50% thresholds for state building aid, and the opportunity or possibility of a sliding scale for that. And I've, I've talked to a lot of people in the legislature that are interested in those kinds of changes, and I feel that that could possibly include availability and access to changes in the things when we're talking about the number of square feet of ballfields required for, for our schools by the number of students that we have, or, and that's not a good example, because they're not actually all that required, but, you know, different classroom spaces and things like that, that if we begin to, to feel that we're better, better able to make a presentation for a school down the road, that if something is difficult or costing a lot, that doesn't suit our community best, maybe we can look at trying to find a new option for it. And when I was having this discussion with the Department of Education, he was also very quick to point out that a few years ago, they made a very conscious decision in their rulemaking to change the way, the, the mission of their rules to be very accessible to waiver, and to be, that the rules are there and they're on paper, but if there are alternatives that a community thinks might be better suited to, that, that they want to hear those and that they want to, they want to grant access to those, which I thought, it was a proactive stance that you would expect to hear otherwise from sort of a governing or executing body. So that was actually, I thought, really a positive sign as well. And so, you know, with that in mind, there are things that we're doing here in Newmarket, I think, to keep in mind of. The, the Newmarket Heritage and Cultural Center Committee is something that I'm on, where we're working to redevelop the public space that's been set aside on the river level of the mills that are being redeveloped into an arts and culture space, and very, literally going about funding from a different angle, talking to corporations and things like that, to try and bring together this space, and we're doing a lot of great work, and included in the design of- And included in the design of this space are opportunities for arts classes and music classes and science classes and nature excursions into Lamprey River and stuff like that. So, it's different than the model that I think that we're used to, but it could be possible that maybe some of what we would traditionally say would be in a classroom at the main school facility, maybe we can, you know, do classes out of this other space sometimes or things like that, or, you know, music classes at the Stone Church for credit and stuff like that. It was something we've talked about before, too. So, I just wanted to say possibly being mindful of those kinds of things being available. That's it.
Great.
Thanks, and thanks for coming again. I really appreciate that you're, that you're here. Any questions for Adam?
Um, well, I do. I, there's this one, I mean, the notes that you gave us, I was just going by those. It's H., House Bill 1713-FN to abolish Department of Education. Do you know anything about that?
There's, so the House side of the legislature is a large body. And there is a number of bills that get filed that aren't necessarily, that don't ever really gain a lot of momentum toward passing. In this case, there's been similar bills filed about other departments around the For lack of the correct term, there was a similar bill filed about the Arts Department of the state. And it was amended last week to fund an art project of some kind. And I had this down in my notes from yesterday because we just voted on it in the House and passed it. And the bill title says that it's going to be cutting the department, but in actuality, it was amended to fund something, and it was very small, so.
Okay. So, just when we see that, I mean, it's kind of alarming to see the title of that bill.
Absolutely.
That would kind of be a little difficult to deal with. I don't know if one of these bills on the list pertains to something about a voucher system. Are you familiar with that? I don't know which one that might be.
I'm not sure if that's a Senate bill that's in place right now.
It is a Senate bill for a business tax credit, but those buildings would go to private or public schools.
So, is that the charter school proponents seek additional funding from school districts? Maybe that's House Bill 1485.
Oh, so it's labeled as a House bill for vouchers?
It is.
Okay.
I don't know.
I'd read about something in the Senate.
Oh, look at that. So, what is the number, please?
Let's see if it gives them a link.
Oh, sorry.
Actually, no, this doesn't give the bill number, but I can find them.
Okay. I was just curious.
For the House.
The voucher concept is different. You know, I've heard plenty of talk of slowly stepping that way. I don't know what everybody at this table feels about it.
I don't really know much about it, so I would love to hear your take on it.
As I understand, and I think it's a hot topic.
Okay.
But as I understand, it's about, it would be about allowing parents to have greater choices on how they're applying their tax funds, on where they're sending their kid to school.
So, maybe an example would be if you live, you live in a town like this?
So, yeah, if you lived in Newmarket and were a strong basketball community, but your son is really into football and there's a stronger football school elsewhere in the state, you could probably find, you know, through the voucher system, send your son to that other school.
Okay. I'm getting you. Okay.
And there's probably a lot of other.
Yeah. I mean, the information I gave the Board specifically in this instance was House Bill 1485, which is if a child family chooses to go to a charter school, then the public dollars follow that child to the charter school.
Mm-hmm.
And it sounded like it was on a, the per pupil cost amount, which is pretty significant amount of money that gets drained, if you will, from the public school.
Yeah. And it's really just a philosophical question, I guess. And I don't know really how strong a support that bill is or is not getting in the House, but it's just a question of, I think, whether you think that, you know, you should get to choose as a parent where those dollars that are basically dedicated to your child are being spent. So, it does, though, at the same time, if that child would have gone to Newmarket and then chooses to go to the charter school, Newmarket's out, the money that would have gone along with that child. And I can see all sorts of discrepancies in budgeting and stuff like that associated with those things.
Marcia, did you want us to speak to that? Have some clarity?
Yeah, there's a couple of things that I could clarify.
Do you mind?
If you want, sure. If you would.
This doesn't mean we won't invite you back at our next meeting.
No.
You're not up for it.
Would you mind if I read the whole article? Would anybody object to?
It looks like it's, what, just a few paragraphs? Not too too long?
Yes. Last week, Seacost Sunday featured a story, Private School Scholarship Bills Rebuke on Education Tax Credit School Voucher Program Proposed in Legislature. The Department of Education has proposed new language that would avoid donor town issue. And I know this was a big issue a couple of years ago, where people were very much objecting to donor towns. However, this education tax credit program is still a missile aimed at the heart of the New Hampshire school system. It could take as much as 200 million or 15% of our students out of New Hampshire public schools over the next 10 years. The state would offer 2,500 vouchers called scholarships to incent children to leave their public schools for private schools or an out-of-district public school. And when the child left, it would take an average of more than $4,000 from the child's school. Supporters say the schools will save money on the departed child, but the New Hampshire Policy Institute, our go-to place for this kind of analysis, says what everyone knows, they would not. There would be two long public hearings on the bills this week, and there will be more. We heard a lot about the benefits of competition. What happens is they're offering a tax credit to businesses to offer these scholarships. And those tax credits can amount up to 75%, which means that those scholarships that are offered to the students, and it's not dedicated to the poor and the needy students, but anybody can apply for those scholarships. And if the businesses agree and offer these scholarships, then again, that money will eventually be taken away from the public school budget. So, that's the big problem with it for the public schools. And anyway, this passed last, week before last in the House, and we're hoping that when it goes to the Senate, that they take a careful look at it. Because in the long run, it is going to hurt the public schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well. Did you have more, Cliff?
You answered a lot of my questions that I was thinking about asking regarding the sliding scale, and thank you for bringing that up regarding, you know, because if you're doing a $40 million project, 30% versus 40% is a big jump if you don't...
Absolutely. And I don't think it makes sense for it to be so stepped like that. So, you know, but it does, as far as I've heard, sound like they're changing a lot of that system. And I'll try to help, I guess, relay back to you what I hear about it. And similarly, as you guys hear more independently, please do let us know.
So, the formula that's been used in the past, as I recall, well, I'm not recalling all of it, but it had a component of community relative wealth, so it's a percentage of free and reduced lunch. And there were a couple other factors that were part of some algebraic that got you to where you fell on an index, and then wherever those breakpoints hit, you were getting 30% or 40%.
Right.
And then, if there were more towns included in the district, there was a benefit to that as well. Do you see that formula being similar to as it's been, or is that under discussion?
I'm not sure. I've brought up the sliding scale concept plenty in discussion, but I haven't, I haven't heard specifically about those pieces of the formula. But I'll ask, actually.
You know, and it's a shame that, you know, in these economic times, we find ourselves essentially competing for the same dollars with other communities and other worthwhile things like wastewater treatment.
Right.
So, it's, you know, it's tough that we're, we're having to try to, you know, compete with our neighbors. But I'm very interested in everyone in New Hampshire getting a quality education, but certainly I've got my laser beam is on getting the best out of...
Yeah, of course.
...the system for Newmarket in both how soon we can get the money, the percentage of money that we can get, and how we can best qualify that for from a need base and a financial need base from how much, the affordability piece as well as the need base from the inadequate.
And people I talk to in terms of the need base prioritization, people are aware of Newmarket at this point, so.
One of the, one of the things that I remember being discussed is one of the pieces to that formula was whether or not you were a cooperative school. And if you had other towns as part of your district, that you got a higher percentage. And what I'd like to point out is, you know, a long time ago, decisions were made to make this a single district SAU. And then, a formula was put together saying if you're a multi-town SAU, then you'll get more funding. So, and the problem that we're facing now is that, you know, we've reached out to communities around us and have been told, we're not interested in forming a cooperative with you, so we are stuck. And so, we'd like to see that.
Yeah, no, sure.
We'd like to see someone champion that cause.
Well, the easy, I think, point to make, you know, for us is the value that having your children remain in your community would entail. So, I think that that makes a ton of sense, and that's how I try to bring it.
Thank you.
Okay. I know we'll be looking for updates.
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks a lot for coming. Okay. Excellent. Well, we look forward to more at the later date from you, Marcia Moody, and hopefully Josh Davenport. I understand he hasn't yet committed to a date.
Not yet. I'm still hopeful. I'll keep pressing.
Super.
Would it be appropriate to just say, you know, publicly that if there's any other people in the town that, you know, heard that or have any other input that they'd like to provide, me or us, or, you know, send us messages so that we can then filter it through to other, to our representatives, because we have to keep the word going.
So, Democratic government fundamental there, so yeah, thank you for sharing that. Okay, we are, as you mentioned earlier, we're going to defer the program of studies discussion to a later meeting and move on to discussion of our school warrant.
Yeah, if you don't mind, what I wanted to do was spend time with a quick refresher, if you will, of our school warrant and exactly where we are. We've made some changes recently. When we go to present in the auditorium, I'm sorry, in the gymnasium, it's really not conducive to doing PowerPoints and the same kinds of explanations. So, if you would, just take a seat, and I can get this set up, and I'll go through some slides so that, again, everybody at home can hear this kind of in, with some lead time coming up to next week's meeting.
Good.
Okay, I'm going to move through these very, very quickly here. The first one is dealing with purchasing properties. And these, again, I do want to read the warrant articles to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,340,000 to purchase properties located at 216, 218, 220, and 204 and 1/2 South Main Street for construction of a new junior/senior high school facility or renovation addition to the existing junior/senior high school facility to be funded with $380,173 from open space bond funds and authorize the withdrawal of $959,827 from the expansion of school facilities capital reserve fund created for this purpose, for the balance of the amount. And obviously, it's supported by the Board and the Budget Committee. What you see here is a layout of the different properties. It's across the street from the current junior/senior high school. People who aren't aware, the Carpenter property where the greenhouse is, has a big expanse out behind it that goes all the way to a town park area. On the other end of the street, you see 204 and 1/2. Carpenter owns a separate piece of property, which is important to us because it becomes a second important means of exit and entrance to the site. And then, you have the Perkins Insurance and the Walker Residence as well. The Carpenter Properties, total purchase price of $975,000. We have a purchase and sale agreement that already confirms that. But what was unknown until we made this public is that it provides for a two-year, up to a two-year lease through July of 2004, has a small amount for rent, has the option to leave early. And it made sense to the buyer, and it certainly was acceptable to us. One of the things people didn't know is that while they're leasing, public law, state law requires that the person leasing, the firm leasing, if it's a business, pay the taxes even though it's owned by the school district. And so, for Carpenter, that's almost $21,500 a year. To deal with that in the escrow accounts, we set up a $40,000 escrow account because, remember, we built a lease that says the lessee can leave early. And yet, that made it difficult in coming to a purchase price. So, by putting money for the cover of the real estate taxes in escrow, anytime that Carpenter decides to break, if he decides to break the lease early, then whatever is remaining in that escrow account comes back to the school district, in effect, then reducing what was the purchase price. The Perkins property, same thing, looking for a lease. They really want to stay there until they can find a place to relocate here in Newmarket. The purchase price of $280,000 is close to their assessed valuation. Same deal, they would pay taxes at $6,800. There is no escrow account for that. They would pay them as well. But again, they are going to be looking for property in town, and as soon as they find it, they're going to be ready to relocate. The Walker property is a residence that has a purchase price of $85,000, and that will, that will be pure ownership on our part. And once it's done, the purchase and sale agreement, we will take care of that in, with demolition and restoration of the property. As you see here in this chart, it shows that the total purchases for 16.05 acres and that the total site... the total site combination of town and school district is over 51 acres. So it's a terrific amount of land, even though it is split by Route 152. The funds, again, come out of open space bond fund, expansion of school facilities reserve. That totaled just over $1.5 million. So when you pay for these four properties out of those two funds, what remains in the expansion of school facilities is $168,267. Article two is the operating budget. And to see if the school district will raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by the vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling $15,209,132. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $15,468,030, which is the same as the last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the New Market District or by law. Or the school board may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40:13, 10, and 16 to take up the issue of revised operating budget only. And it does not include any warrant articles, again, strongly supported by school board and budget committee alike. You see how we get to the $15,209,000 figure? We actually have an operating fund budget of fourteen, just over 14.4 million. But we also have other funds that it takes to fully operate a school system. The food service fund is budgeted at $325,000. The federal funds, these are grants that we get that are entitlement grants. You never know exactly what the amount is. But we budget $450,000. And those three numbers add up to the total operating budget. For the food service fund and the federal funds, you'll see later on the revenues, both of those programs have revenues that come in and offset all of that expense. So in the end, it's really the 14.4 of local money. You see here, the $14,459,889 is the current year operating budget. So next year's operating budget is actually a decrease from this year, a decrease of 0.18 percent. Here's a picture of revenues. It shows the different sources. I'm not going to walk you through all of them. However, there's that, in the middle, the projected reduction to appropriation. Last year, we approved for this year special warrant articles. And a special warrant article means that any remaining funds after the work is done are returned to offset appropriations in the following year. And so we already believe, we already know out of our special warrant articles, it's nearly $300,000 that goes forward to reduce that appropriation. So you get to see at the bottom the amounts that are raised by, for local taxes. And I'll come back to tax impact later on. Article three is fire and life safety to see if the school district will vote to establish a capital reserve fund for construction of a new school building and renovation of existing school buildings for fire and life safety code compliance. Very long name to a special fund. And raise and appropriate the sum of $769,270 to be placed in the fund and to designate the school board as agents to expend the fund, again, recommended strongly by the school board and the budget committee. What you see up here is the four-year plan. Sometimes we refer to it as a three-year plan, but it really is, covers a four-year span and shows the work that was determined to be done to bring the school district totally in compliance with fire and life safety and the related ADA compliance. And so we spent the $200,000 this year. I've given you some examples of how that's been utilized. You see here for each year and for next year, certainly, the money gets targeted towards an elevator and enclosed stairway and second floor science labs creating compliant egresses from those spaces. The total for that plan is just over $2 million. We know we have a deadline of September of 2015 that we're expected to either be fully in compliance or be under construction. The new capital reserve fund, though, creates that dual purpose that we believe this community is looking for. No one's interested in putting money into a building that we may not be utilizing. And so the ability to deal with fire and life safety, if that's what we have to do, or use it for construction of another facility, if that's what we have to do. And so that's what this fund allows, is that dual-purpose flexibility. School board, agents, if the funds are not used for fire and life safety, they can be used for project design work or even down the road to reduce the amount for a bond. But if Article one doesn't pass, I strongly recommend it to the board. If we don't get to purchasing land, we're really halted moving forward for a project. And it's really important that we use these monies to make the fire and life safety upgrades. Article four is school design to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $160,000 for the purpose of architectural and engineering fees associated with the construction of a new junior/senior high school or renovation addition to the existing junior/senior high school facility and authorize a withdrawal of $160,000 from the expansion of school facilities capital reserve fund created for that purpose, again, strongly recommended by the board and the budget committee. There are different stages in a construction project. We've completed schematic design if we're building on the new property, but we haven't if we're building on the current property. So this fund, this amount of money allows us to deal with those two options. We really are at a point where we still need to move both of those options forward and decide which one is really the best one for this community. So that's what we'll be doing with this $160,000. And there's Article five, which Bob had mentioned earlier. To give you an idea of the tax impact, as you can see here, you've got the impact of the warrant articles. Article one, purchased properties, and Article four, school design, have no additional tax impact. Comes out of existing funds. The operating budget and the fire and life safety, you have the amounts of the tax impact. So you get a total estimated school tax of $16.57, whereas the current school tax is $17.24. So even if you vote the operating budget and the fire and life safety, you still are seeing a reduction in the school tax. The last thing that I would want to stress is really what Bob had stressed as well earlier in his remarks. The deliberative session is truly an important meeting for voters. It isn't just going and voting in March. It's really coming to the deliberative session, hearing the discussion about the articles, and being present if changes are made to those articles so that you can have your voice, your voice applied to whatever warrant articles actually move forward to the March meeting. So again, it's a deliberative session is on Wednesday, February 8th at 7:00 PM at the high school gym. And I really hope a lot of people do come out for that evening. And that's all I have. It was quick, but hopefully it played well at home and people understand what they're
Thank you, Jim. Put it in a nice nutshell. It seems like, you know, all that hard work turned into four straightforward warrant articles.
Well, the thing that I didn't, let me stress one last point?
Sure.
Okay. Purchasing the land, regardless of what you think, it truly is an investment for this community that keeps your options open. And to turn away from that leaves us really dead in the water because there aren't other options. This is a great option, and I really hope people take a look at it. And regardless of your motivation or how you feel about a very expensive school, it's just important that you see the value in investing money in this particular property at this time.
Thank you.
Do you want to ask a question?
Sure.
Just ask for further clarification.
I know that there's a question out there, and you've explained it to us, but I want you to reiterate it to the people at home and here, why we purchased the Carpenter property for more than the assessed value? Because there's a question about that. And you would talk to us about how that property is, has a unique, because they're wondering why we did that.
It does. The nature of that property is unique in that people would like to see an in-town location, I think, all things considered. They love the in-town location for the school. So that's a desirable piece of that property that if it were two miles out of town, wouldn't be in effect. The other thing is that although there are other properties you could consider, Rockingham Golf Course, Rosa, I'm going to get that name wrong again.
Rosa Ambulia.
Ambulia, thank you. Both of those have associated costs that you don't have with the Carpenter, et cetera, property. To make Carpenter property ready for access and building, you're already there. Really, all you need is a crosswalk. But to make the Carpenter, the Rockingham Golf Course, for example, accessible, there's significant roadwork. There is other issues. I'm not sure, sewer or water that has to get out there. And so there's a lot of infrastructure monies that have to be spent before you're really ready. And so to make that equal, there's more money to be spent. Similarly, for Rosa Ambulia. There, one of those sites has a lot of excavated land. And architects have said, you need to refill that land. You need to get water and sewer out to that property. And I'm not sure, it's about a mile, I believe, to get it out there. And so the estimate that the architects have given is spending two and a half to $3 million. So to compare apples to apples, you're spending several hundred thousand dollars or maybe a half million to put the golf course and two and a half to $3 million to put that Rosa property on an equal footing with what you have with Carpenter's. And so why would you spend more? Because if you don't spend the more there, you sure are going to be spending it somewhere else. And again, without that in-town property. So to me, that's what makes it a special property. And then when you get into negotiating real estate, you have to keep those things in mind.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you again.
You're welcome.
In correspondence, I see you've included some letters to property owners, the sellers of the properties. I thought those were nicely written and a wonderful gesture. And...
And each of these agreements has, as you would normally do in a real estate transaction, has a deposit amount. And I know the checks are ready, so tomorrow I intend to write a letter and get the deposit sent off to the, the money's not held by the owners, it's held by attorneys in this case in escrow. So we'll do that tomorrow.
And we have some data on the dropout rate. I'm recalling that that did recently come up at the public hearing. Someone was concerned with those numbers. It's quite a table of data. Is there anything you want to highlight specifically?
Yeah, it is quite a bit. Let me, that's not what I'm looking for. There it is. The dropout rate for New Market High School shows an annual rate of just over 1%, 1% of the population, 1.06. As you look at the state, it's a little bit higher than that, almost 1.2. The better figure of comparison, the furthest piece of data to the right, you notice that it's kind of like a filtered dropout rate because you can have dropouts who go and get a GED, and that's not necessarily a bad thing. And so they sift out those numbers. And so comparatively, we're even better than the state average with that information. So that's really a pretty good, pretty good place to be. And we really work hard to keep that number down.
The, as I'm recalling, there was some change along the way where the terms of how they figured that formula used to be different. And I think some of these data, the numbers toward the left may have been, if I read it right, use that old formula where since we don't, it reflects on the fact that since we don't have an adult ed program in New Market, if you, since, if you don't go, you don't finish in New Market, but go to an adult ed program in Exeter, you count as a dropout in someone who doesn't finish high school when in fact, in reality, that's not the case.
Disguised, I agree.
Yeah. But I want to say they've made some changes to that effect, and that might be reflected in the column on the far right.
I think they have. I know if Chet were here, I know what he'd say.
Yeah.
Geebecks. He would tell you about geebecks. And it's not necessary that every kid who goes there is a prime potential for dropping out. But it's an alternative setting where potential dropouts can find a different home. And so that's a really key part of our strategy to get every kid to a diploma. So as you, as things come along about supporting that, it really is part of our overall strategy.
And Jim, as a reminder, the law has changed that you cannot, you need to stay in school until you're 18 years old, correct?
Yes.
So, so, just, a lot of people don't, still don't realize that, that you're, that students are required to stay in school until they are 18. They cannot drop out before...
Although there's a lot, Marsha, you're still here. There's a lot of legislation that may be changing that.
The legislature just passed an order that I think is 16.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
Just passed?
In the House.
Okay, but not the complete?
We don't know about the 70s.
So it is headed in the wrong direction. I don't think the governor supports it, but the...
Well, what, I don't know if you're aware how the legislature is. The bills are voted in the House. And then we have at the end of February, beginning of March, what we call crossover. And that means all House bills go to the Senate, and all Senate bills come to the House. And then they're voted on by the opposite body. And then if they pass both Houses, then it goes to the governor for signature or veto.
Okay. All right.
So...
Okay, note to self.
Yeah.
Right, right about that.
There are lots of bills at the House. And I mean, Adam, I thought, gave a good explanation that some of them never see the light of day, but they do make you worry when you see them.
Well, I will make this comment that with this particular legislative session, a lot of these bills that we do not want to see the light of day are seeing the light.
I don't disagree. Makes me nervous.
I just, I can't imagine what the argument could be to say that a 16-year-old, forget a 16-year-old, an 18-year-old making that decision isn't, you know what I'm saying? Letting a 16-year-old make a decision like that...
The argument is parental control.
Right.
If the parents agree that the kid could stop at 16, it's on...
Well, we could bait that for a while.
Yeah.
Well, I agree.
I have a funny feeling we're of one mind on that one. All right.
As correspondence, I also gave you, because I know not a lot of you have received it, but a letter that went home from the principal Tuesday, I believe, once we had full knowledge of what's the impact of the ceiling issues and then how are we going to deal with it as a school. The way it's written here may strike you as a little odd. This was really the language and the scenario he gave to students in that assembly. Prior to my speaking, Chris went through all of this with the students. And so then he quickly put it into a letter to go home.
Any questions about that piece? I thought that was covered pretty well. It's nice to see that snippet of the assembly as well.
Yeah, yeah.
It was terrific. I mean, you could have heard a pin drop in that.
I was just going to bring that up. When speaking with the principal before we met briefly with the fire chief, he mentioned that you could hear a pin drop in that room and how wonderful it is that cooperative everyone is in this, in these trying times, so. everyone is in this, in these trying times, so kudos to all. Okay. Bond bank numbers, huh?
10 minutes and 9, I have to look at them.
Don't worry, they're really small numbers.
They're so small.
In font.
Look at them leave, look at them.
Okay, so what I've handed out tonight is the first packet, the first stapled packet is, Jim gave me two numbers first, I should say that. Jim gave me two numbers. If a project costs 51 million, and if a project costs 48 million. So the first packet of information is the 51 million. And it's the total of the 51 million, and then it's segregated out, if you flip through your pages, there's a 20-year, 25-year, and 30-year projection. And then, as part of each projection, there's with and without state aid. So if you just look at the first page, this is without state aid, for 51 million, for level principal bond for 20 years. And over on the far right-hand side is the estimated tax rate increase.
I don't even wanna look at that page.
Well, right, so go to the next page.
Because that's not gonna happen.
So the next page has, the next page has the, with the state reimbursement. And again, this is level principal. The third part of your packet is frequently asked questions about bonds. And in that, in that part, it describes the different, there's three different structures, basic structures available for bonds. So level principal means the payments are equal every year, and it usually results in lower interest costs, generally results in higher impact on the tax rate in the early years. Level debt is the total principal plus interest payments are equal every year, usually results in higher interest costs, but the results in constant impact on the tax rate throughout the term. And the third, which is what Cliff had asked me previously to get the schedule for, and I was told that it wasn't something they were currently offering, but I did send another email when I found it on frequently asked questions. She hasn't returned my email yet, that was two days ago, so when I get it, I'll forward it out to the board. But it says it's generally too costly to issue in the district's name in the open market, but a synthetic capital appreciation bond is available through the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank. This option allows the district to structure a cab bond to match a level debt bond issued by the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank in the open market, typically used for school districts. Principal payments are higher in the early years, resulting in higher state building aid, if building aid stays the same. That was part of the current legislation, the previous legislation, I should say, to be received in the early years. Higher interest costs in level principal, lower impact on the tax rate in the early years, and higher in the later years. Because your higher reimbursements are gonna come early into the project, into the bond. So there's a lot of information here. 20-year is a, I think it was, lower interest rate, as you go to 25-year, it's higher, was that, no, it was the other way around, I'm sorry, it was the other way around.
Other way around, right.
I believe. Wait a minute, there's so many pages here. Nope, take that back. 20-year was the lowest interest rate, highest, yeah, oh, sorry, Jen. Highest rate, sorry, highest rate, sorry. Highest rate was for the 30-year bond. So, I mean, there is a lot of information, but what they do is, as you get closer to going forward, they will project out different rates, so you can show the taxpayers when you go for the bond article. And I had just printed off today what their recent bonds were. They were all in the threes, 3 percent. So I can't find it right this minute. I showed Jim earlier, they were all in the 3 percents, so. Wait a minute, I have it here. They had a recent issue, November 30th, and 20-years was at 3.38 percent, and 30-years was at 3.98 percent. And everything that you have in front of you is at around, starts around 4 percent. Some of them go lower over time, some of them stay the same.
And that was what, January 30th numbers?
November 30th.
November 30th.
So, it's a lot of information. I think they're happy to come out and meet with the board, to, you know, kind of walk them through the process. I've never been through the process. I did meet with the former business manager in Exeter, who gave me his great big binder on their building project over there, and he's certainly a resource for us. He'd be happy to come and meet with the board as well, so.
Like pitfalls and things that they ran into along the way, and like, yeah, that'd be good to know.
Well, yeah, it's a lot to digest. A lot of numbers.
It's a ton of numbers.
Well, at least gets you thinking about...
It does.
What period length are we, maybe, may we be targeting? We're still a ways away from that, but just start thinking about it. I mean, it's pretty clear you need state aid. We already knew that, but it's even more striking when you see the numbers, so.
What was I gonna say? You know, there's been a call for this information in the town, you know, they want to know. Now, I think it's rather premature to ask for this when we don't even know what the cost of a new building or renovated building would be. But with that said, you know, it is something that's being asked for. Is there any, is this being made? I mean, obviously, it's public now, because we're talking about it, but anybody has access to that information if they would like it?
Yeah.
Absolutely, you know. But again, there are just a lot of scenarios here that you're looking at, and we really don't know, I mean, the final price, granted, we got the preliminary price of 53 million, but that's not gonna be the final price. We know that. It's a matter of how can we trim that back, and that's gonna take a long time and a variety of steps. You know, as I said before...
Kind of like putting the cart before the horse.
Well, it is, you know, again, tonight, when I didn't say it, but when I talked about that 160,000 to move us forward, to do the next stage, to get to the next cost estimate, you really have to do all of design development. And all of design development would have cost half a million plus, I think he said somewhere around 550,000 dollars. And it just didn't seem to be the time to be asking from anything that raises taxes for that, but at least let's try and keep moving forward. I think, I really believe that when the day comes to apply as a project, the further defined we are, the closer we are to moving forward with construction, then I think the better becomes our application.
And I think, you know, we discussed, it was discussed, I should say, at the facilities committee meeting last night, that, you know, that 160,000 dollars, you know, there's a cry in the public for us to vet out that renovation addition option. And though it may pain somebody to put, we've all, we've all kind of agreed, you know, that there's no way to really move forward unless we really exhaust all, you know, answer all the questions, you know. And so is that what my, I'm hearing you say, is that a good portion of that 160...
Yes, and I don't know what the amount would be. I know earlier we had two warrant articles, one was 40,000. I'm not sure to answer that question, it's as simple as 40,000, I think it's more than that. But I don't, the impression I got last night is that we don't need to go to a full schematic in order to answer that question.
Yeah, that's what Dan was kind of...
So I think that's gonna be the first, the first, right out of the blocks, if they approve that warrant article, is to get moving on that, answering that question, and then we see where we are.
Yeah.
We have to leverage the work that was done back several years ago as much as we can.
I agree.
Right.
Right.
And he did say last night that he was gonna go back and look at some of those, he had a couple different drawings and stuff, so I hope, I think he gets it, he hears us, and yeah, I think that's a good way we should move forward.
All right, so the interest rate is...
It's at the top.
Yeah, I see it.
Yeah.
So these, these aren't the, is this the interest rate set that was as of November 30th?
No, this is what they project out.
Okay.
This, I said that we're looking to get, to buy property, I told her the whole scenario. And so they're projecting out, she's quoting it as of today for me, but it's projected out that we're not gonna start anything and be borrowing the money. So, I mean, it's an estimate on their part.
Right. And they're estimating that interest rates are gonna go up, then?
At that point, yeah.
Which I guess is, means the economy's recovering?
I read a report today that says interest rates will stay low for quite some time to come.
I did hear that, I've heard that, too.
Who knows?
Can you just say again, I was dizzy looking, what the rates are as of...
On November 30th?
Yeah, November 30th.
It was a 20-years was at 3.38 percent, and 30-years was 3.98 percent. They don't tell you what 25 was.
3.98, okay.
Now, is that rate the same for any municipality in the state of New Hampshire, or, so it's based on the credit rating of, essentially of the state?
Right, if you go on to the, that New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank site has a lot of information on it, and then you click on a link, and you email them, and you tell them what you're looking for, for information. So it's really just general, how much is the project, how many years do you want to go out? But there's a lot of information on there about all kinds of issues that, you know, you might have questions on. It's really, you should pop on the site, it's really, I mean, I only printed one little piece of it, but...
Maybe we'll all get intimately involved with this site before we are over.
Well, it talks about how, if you were to go out on your own, if you were a municipality or a school district to go out on your own, then you would have to pay in bond insurance, you would have to have your credit rating done, you would be judged on your credit rating. This is, you know, a group that they, that they're, they're get the rate based on, they sell the bonds. So it's not based on your credit rating.
It's based on their creditworthiness effect.
Right. And it's a group, so I mean, you should do better. There was a lot of information, I, well, those bonds are all new to me.
All right.
Food for thought.
Extrapolating an interest rate on a number that we don't know with a multiplier that's, is it 30 percent, is it 40 percent?
All in favor, say aye.
Yeah, right.
What are we talking about?
Thank you for providing that. It's not funny, but, numbers. And a lot of the little ones, one's page, okay. We've got some policies with second reads.
Right, looking for your approval tonight on all of these policies. Some are revisions, and some are new. The first one deals with revision in petty cash accounts. And the remaining ones basically all deal with student service type issues.
So you're looking for motions?
I am.
All right, we'll start with it. I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised petty cash account policy, DJC.
I'll second.
Any discussion? The, this is workable?
Sure.
As far as it doesn't, it all makes sense to me, and it's nice clear language, with less ambiguities than the old. Other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, ACE.
I will make a motion to approve the revised procedural safeguards, nondiscrimination on the basis of handicap slash disability, ACE.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yep.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a motion to, did you want to talk about this one first, Jim, where it's new, or...
Well, we can, it's a new, it's a new one, and it deals with parentally placed private school students, and that's if a private school exists within the boundaries of your district, so.
Ah, okay.
You know, it's good to have a policy like this, you never know, somebody could start a school, and all of a sudden, you're faced with something without a policy.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the new school district obligation under IDEA to parentally placed private school students, ACEA.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I will make a motion to approve the revised policy programs for pupils with disabilities, IHBA.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And this procedure with, that goes with that.
And I will make a motion to approve the revised procedure, referral procedure for special education services, IHBA-R.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And I will make a motion to approve the new policy evaluation requirements for children with specific learning disabilities, IHBAA.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's go.
I will make a motion to accept the, approve the revised home education policy, IHBG.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's have it.
And I will make a motion to approve the revised policy, student records and access, JRA.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Paul Robinson would be proud.
Look at us go.
Paul was a board member from several years ago, who did huge service to the community in helping us revise our policy manually.
That's great.
Part of his parting words were, you gotta keep up on this, because if you get behind, it's...
Well, we're hanging in there so far.
Yeah. Okay, resignations or other leave requests?
I have a leave request for you from Holly Russell, who's an English teacher at the high school, and seeking maternity leave that would begin May 16th of this year, and then extend the last 22 days of the school year.
I'll make a motion to accept the maternity leave request for Holly Russell. Do I need to put dates in there, or is that, starting on May 16th, 2012?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Looked like she's got a thoughtful plan for her absence.
Yes, yeah.
It was nice to see that level of detail. Other thoughts? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
And nominations?
None.
We have a manifest.
We do. I would like to make a motion to accept the total of all manifests in the amount of
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Does she need to...
Okay. So, it's not acutely obvious to all yet, let it be known that the town deliberative session piece is on February 7th, that's Tuesday, at the high school gymnasium. And if we're not exhausted by then, we'll come back for more on Wednesday, the 8th, at 7:00 PM in the high school gym, for the school district deliberative session. And that, the second piece of that town meeting is March 13th, which is Tuesday... And that, the second piece of that town meeting is March 13th, which is Tuesday, and that the polls will be open, I think, the typical eight, no, 7:00 in the morning till 8:00 in the evening. Otherwise, we've got Project Graduation Bingo on Saturday at 11:30.
Yeah, although actually they needed to move that to next Saturday, February 11th due to the bathroom issue at the high school, so hopefully everyone that, all the regulars that come to the, to Bingo know that it's not this Saturday, it's the following Saturday.
I would, I'd like to just add that also on that day, February 11th, the elementary band, I believe, is having their pancake breakfast in the cafeteria that morning from nine, I think it's from 9:00 to 11:00, which...
At the elementary school?
All right.
Yeah, $7, I believe, to get in, is that what you've heard?
Of course, and band.
It's for chorus and band to help raise money for their greatest soup festival that they go to. And I think in the past, they've gone to Applebee's and done it, but they decided, working with our wonderful food service director, they decided that it was something that, that we could do. When, I did it years ago in 1980s, we did it this very same way, so I'm very happy to see it come back to the town and have it be kind of more of a, I don't know, homey environment.
Yeah.
But again, were the hours of that?
I think it, I think it's 9:00 to 11:00. Is it on this, it's got to be on the school website.
I don't know. Scott usually sends me stuff I didn't get.
Yeah, I believe it's 9:00, it's 9:00 to 11:00. My, I should know because my daughter has to actually work at it. I don't remember, but that's it.
All right. So any other note, dates of note? Our next school board meeting is on the 16th, as is shown there. And Melissa was still here, she'd be looking, staring down at the winter break, they're the last week of February into the first week of March and we're hoping to have the last bits of the, these repairs at the junior, senior high school completed before that week is over.
We hope, although I, I think the bathrooms have slowed them up a little bit, more complicated than what they thought, so we may, I'm still hoping we make it because they're going to have a full vacation to work, you know, without students there during the day as well as the evening, so, so we'll see. We still got a ways to go. March 7th is the next meeting of the Facilities Committee, it's at 5:30 in the auditorium.
All right. Any other dates of note?
Just that Melissa mentioned the Penguin Plunge, I think, was on the 4th.
Right.
February, I don't know if, I mean, I, I think there is actually a large group of people that actually go and watch the whole, I've never done it before, never watched, but I think Channel 9 actually goes in.
I think Joan is going to make a surprise appearance.
Come on, Joan.
I'm cold sitting here.
I pay money, I pay money for that.
Okay.
I'll give this to you. Melissa snuck out before I could give her...
Oh, sure, I'll send it over in the interoffice.
Thanks.
All right.
Yeah.
We have need for a non-public session this evening?
Yes, we do, under RSA 91-a colon 3, paragraph 2e, consideration and negotiation of pending claims of litigation. So moved.
Second.
Kelly?
Aye.
Did you second it?
Oh, I seconded, I thought you wanted to know if I said aye. I don't know what I'm supposed to be doing right now.
I don't know, hang on.
It's quarter.
Hang on, because I got to do this. Let's, boom, 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 boom. Vote, call, vote. Cliff Chase?
Aye.
Linda Montagani?
Aye.
Kelly Foster?
Aye.
Meg Leinmore?
Aye.
Okay.